All right. Hello, everyone, and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. Today, we have a super special guest, and you don't know who it is yet. I'm Coach Ashley. We're joined today by our founders Greg and Amanda Kilwin. And you guys say hello.
Hey, everybody. Welcome. We are extra excited for today. We're usually excited, but you know, today's a little extra exciting. So yeah, we're glad you're here.
Hi, everybody. Yes, very exciting day today and excited of what's cooking.
Yes, absolutely. So today, as promised, we are talking about how you can share Young Living with 10 times more interested people. All right, we're going to go into that just a little bit, and we're going to bring out a special guest who went gold in Young Living in six months. And the way that she went about doing this is pretty incredible, and the coolest part is it's duplicating. It's not just here's somebody that's just like insanely gifted, and you know, she did a thing, and now she's there. This is actually working and duplicating. So you're going to learn some more about that as well, and it ties all into what we're going to be talking about today. So as we're coming in over in the chat, let us know where you're coming in from. If you have questions, if you if you need help, these weekly work sessions are designed for you as a young living business builder to have a resource, to have a place to go to, where you can ask us your questions about tech, about marketing, about anything really. If you go through our list of replays of all of these sessions, you see there's not really a stone that goes unturned. So go ahead and put into your questions into the Q and A, and let's go ahead and get started. So I see a bunch of people commenting here. You guys are coming in from all over the place. It's exciting.
Sunny Florida. It's sunny in North Dakota, too, for what it's worth, but I'm sure it's nicer in Florida. Hi, Shelley. And we've got North Carolina, Ohio, Virginia, all over the place. So cool.
Fantastic. So I want to ask you guys a question. Quick show of hands. How many of you have started a really interesting and engaged conversation with someone, and you never quite got around to actually sharing Young Living with them? You know, maybe you were talking about health or wellness goals, or really any of the things that are peripheral to Young Living and what the products can accomplish for people. How many of you have had a great conversation, but then you just never quite made it over to sharing? Quick show of hands. Yes.
Lots of hands.
I think we've all dealt with this, right? I mean, you're talking to somebody in the grocery line, or you're talking to someone at a vendor event, or wherever you find your people on a Facebook conversation, whatever. And it's just not quite the right time, right? Maybe you've got a class coming up, and you just want them to come to the class, and that's the way you've been doing business. And you know, just haven't been to it, the ball dropped, and that could have, that conversation could have become a new membership, right? A new member in your organization, but we never quite got there. So today, I want to talk about a very simple strategy that you can use using Get Oiling to never have that happen again. Another quick question, if I want to take these hands down. Here's a question for you. For those of you who have done vendor events or local in-person events, how many of you have stacks of paper where people have filled out their name and their email address and said they're interested in getting something, but you never did anything with the list? I hear about this all the time. Paper sign up sheets, what do I do with them, right? Or we forget, or it just seems like a ton of work because it kind of is, right? Yeah, so we're also going to talk a little bit about how you can prevent that from ever happening again as well. Although that is something, if you're, if you do vendor events, make sure you go and check out our vendor event training, because we talk about a couple of really key strategies that will make the most out of the time you put into those events if that's what you do. So, all right, so the simple answer, right, is if you're going to be contacting people, right? If you're going to be having conversations with people that are peripheral to or directly related to your business, you are doing something called prospecting. And what you need to do when you're prospecting, like you would in any sales role, is to keep records of the contacts that you make. And in our world, we call this a contact manager, or a customer or contact relationship manager. And at the heart of what we have in Get Oiling is a contact manager built for you, the Young Living distributor. So Greg is going to show you this magical thing that he built. And we're going to talk about how you can use it very simply, easily, on the go, to make sure that the people that you have these conversations with, you never drop the ball with. So if you've got a great convo, and you don't want to forget about it, and you want all of that stuff in there, and you're keeping track, and even if you have like some special goodies to share, right? If you've got recipes, if you have campaigns that you've built, really simple, easy way to connect those people into your system and have all of this stuff in one place. And just as a final aside here, if you're someone who is who is out in the community belly-to-belly building with people, and having those conversations and wanting to move them toward membership, if you're having these conversations on Facebook, if you are not keeping track, if you are not putting the name, the contact information, I talked to them on this date, and here's when I need to make sure I talk to them again, if you're not doing that, I don't care how much hustle you are doing, you are bound to hit a point of saturation in your productivity where you're going to just start dropping the balls. Each one of these contacts is a ball that you're juggling, and there is sort of a threshold as to how many things can actually be juggled at once. And we want you to get the most out of your business building activities. So Greg, I want to kick it over to you so you guys can see how this works, and then we're going to bring out our special guest.
Cool. Can you see the screen?
Sure can.
Fantastic. All right. Contact manager. Actually, what I'm going to do today is something a little bit different. Normally, I show it, you know, full screen like this when you're on your desktop computer. But since we're talking about doing this on the go, which is, you know, a lot of what happens, you bump into somebody somewhere, and you're not, you know, at your computer. Obviously, people aren't carrying around their laptops all day. So what I'm going to do is shrink this down and show you what it looks like on your phone. I don't know how many of you know this, but the, you know, Get Oiling does work on your phone. There's a way, if you don't know how to do this, you know, just send us an email. But there's a way to add an icon for Get Oiling right to your phone home screen so that you can have it. It looks like an app. But so here's what it looks like. I mean, it'll be sort of looking like this on your phone. But yeah, like, let's say you're talking with somebody, and you know, you're like, oh, I need to follow up with them on Tuesday because they said, okay, I'm going to be, you know, I need to get in touch with them on Tuesday, something like that. So we're now in your contact manager. In the mobile view, the mobile version of this, there's this little menu button over here. You can click that and go to your contact manager under here. Click on manage. And then there will be a create button here that will show up here in a second. You can just hit create, and you'll add in their contact. Let's say their name is Test Test, because that's how creative I am right now. Then you can say like, okay, there, or maybe they're a prospect. Cool. And this is a cool thing, too, right? You can rate them like, oh, you want to follow up with them, rate them five because they're like on fire or something. So you can do that. That'll just automatically remind you every few days. And hey, if you're, if they're up for it, you could even add a photo right here if you really wanted to, because from your phone, you can snap a photo. So I mean, I'm just throwing out some ideas there. Obviously, that might be a little weird if you just met somebody, but you never know. Some people are open to it. Get their contact info here, drop in their email address. I know there's this fake email address I can throw in here, and you can tag people, too. So you could, you know, if you're doing this frequently, you could end up with a situation where you have a tag already prepared for this type of person. And you're like, you know, in-person meetup or something, or met in person. Maybe that's what it is.
Or a Facebook prospect, right?
Yeah, or Facebook prospect. Let's do that. Facebook prospect. Super. If you've got any other contact information, obviously, you can toss that in here. You might, you know, they don't have a member number yet. Skip everything that you don't need to. And then right when you're adding it, there's a background info here, too, so you can drop in some notes, like, you know, it's just to keep track of where, you know, maybe where you met them, or how you met them, or what they're interested in, that sort of thing. So you can just, you know, do this quickly. It's pretty easy to breeze through this right away when you're, when it's all fresh in your mind. But you know, if you're like me, and you give it 10 minutes, like, half those details kind of fade off into the ether. So it's great to just have that and pump that right in here while it's fresh in your mind. And you can even, right when you're adding the contact, you can even add a campaign or a follow-up plan right away, too. So the campaign is, you know, it'll automatically send them emails and/or texts, depending on how you have it set up. So if you have, you know, if they wanted to, they say, hey, I'm really interested in learning about XYZ. You have a campaign for that. Fantastic. Pick the campaign, you know, whatever it might be. Or the follow-up plans, if you want to, you know, if you do, if you're doing a lot of this, you can create a follow-up plan, which we have another training on, but basically, it's some prepackaged to-dos. You can add a follow-up plan there, and then, you know, I think we'll remind you on those specific days, like, follow up this person in two days, follow up with them in three days. You know, they sell, put my follow-up plan on there right away, hit create, and we've got the contact right in there. Of course, when you're doing this on the fly, it's not going to take quite as long because you won't have to talk through it like I've been doing. But adding a contact's pretty simple. There it is, and we should have the follow-up plan on there as well, which is full of interesting stuff here. But basically, yeah, we have all those to-do items now that are lined up for following up with them in person. If we had a campaign, that would also be here, too. But yeah, so that's, that's kind of the on-the-fly part of it. You know, as you're going, this is maybe what your, what your phone looks like when you're adding them on the fly. Yeah, so it's kind of like you can have the Get Oiling app right on your phone. And Ashley, feel free to jump in at any point.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so, so looking at this, you guys, and we do have additional supplemental trainings. We don't want to, you know, go too far down the rabbit hole here, but we have trainings on how you can use these follow-up plans. If you have a specific series of things that you do, if you, you know, meet somebody, and then you want to make sure within 24 hours you've followed up, and maybe you've sent them a sway, or you've, you know, however it is that you communicate with them, you can actually go in and say, okay, this is what I want to be reminded to do on this day, that day, and the other. And then you're going to get a to-do, just like you have a virtual assistant telling you what to do today, like, here's what's on your schedule. So this is something that's possible for you that works very quickly, and will ensure that however you're going about meeting people, you are staying on top of that relationship and making sure that you don't drop the ball, because the more people you communicate with, the more of these things you have to maintain. And that is why using a contact manager like this is such a powerful thing to do for your business. Shelley is asking how we can add the icon or app to your phone. So like, if you wanted to access this directly from your phone, what's, what's sort of the CliffsNotes way of doing that, Greg?
It depends on whether you have a smartphone or, or sorry, a smartphone, obviously. You have to have a smartphone. It won't work on a flip phone. But it depends on whether you have iOS or Android. There is an article here. I can put it in the chat, and then maybe we can follow up with this on, you know, the YouTube video or something. I don't know. Well, but I'll put this in that, whoops, I need to put that to everybody, not just panelists here. So there is a, there's an article that I've been sending out to people. Basically, on Android, I think you can, there's like a little triple dot icon, and this isn't an Android computer I'd show you, or an Android app I'd show you. But like in the upper right-hand corner of your browser, there's like a little triple dot icon, and then a menu will come down, and you can say add to home screen. And then it'll put a little icon on there that'll be the Get Oiling drop. And I think it says Get Oiling, or whatever page it is that you've bookmarked. On iPad, there's like this little share, it's, it's Apple share icon. It looks like a little rectangle with an arrow pointing up. You know what? I could probably, one second, let me expand this out here. I'll just pull up the article here quick and show you that the icon is nice. This is the article I was referring to, but so like on Android, you click, there's a little triple dot icon here, and you add to home screen. And then under, if you have an iPhone, there's this little icon here, or iPad, where you can click that, and then there's an add to home screen button there, too. So either one of those will work. If you have some other phone or have any trouble, send us an email. We'll help you out.
Awesome. And how you can, you can use that in a couple of ways. One of them would be that add a new contact page, right? So from that page where you're adding someone new, put that on your desktop as an icon. If you're using this on your phone or your tablet and you're on the go. And then another one as well, just, you know, drop a bug in your ear. You guys, if you're using a kiosk mode landing page, you can have people opt in for text and email campaigns directly from your phone as well. You could just click that button, hand them your phone, and tell them to enter their information. And so now you have a contact, and you didn't even have to do all the note-taking. So very cool, great shortcut.
Absolutely. Yeah, you can, I mean, you can add more than one icon, too, I think is what you were saying there. So you can have a create contact. Maybe you've got one for the two-way texting. Maybe you've got one for something else. So yeah, you can add as many as you want to.
Totally, totally. All right. So elephant in the room, who here is excited to meet our special guest today and learn how she hit gold in six months? Yes, there's those hands. Flying up. All right. I am going to bring her out as a panelist. I want to have everybody, please come over to the chat and welcome Martha Crecci. So excited to have you with us.
How's it going? Thank you. Good morning. It's going so stinking well, right? Just drinking my coffee and hanging out with you guys. Can I just say super quick, you guys, contact managers are where it's at. The stat is seven to 15 times that people have to hear about something in order to finally make the decision. Two to 3% of the people will make that, that call on the first touch. Seven to 15 times is a normal amount of times, and if you are not keeping track of your people, you are losing them so fast. So anyhow.
Money on the table. Yep. Awesome, awesome. So Martha, we've, we've been chatting today about a fun project that we're putting together. But I want, just for people who don't know you yet or know your story, please let everybody know kind of the background here.
Oh, man. Well, shoot. Previous to YL, I'm just going to talk about a little bit of stuff because really, it doesn't, I mean, it matters because it's why I know the things that I know. But really, what, what most people care about is the YL story, right? But previous to YL, I worked for GoDaddy and Leadership for a long time. I had my own digital marketing company, but really professional business strategist. That's what I did, and then I did it by way of digital marketing, which is exactly why you're, you're going to see the things that you see from me, is because that's my, that's my forte. It's my lane, is what I love. So yeah, with Young Living, I started building in January of this year. I hit silver in three months, and I hit gold in six months, and now I'm hurtling toward, toward platinum. So a lot of people want to know how on earth that happened. Whenever I signed up with Young Living, I signed up under a friend, and she is not a businessperson. So whenever I signed up, I was kind of like, what is this, right? Like, how does this, I was hoping for you do this, you do this, you do this, and you do this, and this is how, you know, you'll be able to build your business because you'll, you know, you'll do these things. That's what I was hoping for. I didn't get that. And also, the person above me isn't a businessperson, so I didn't get really any direction at all. And I was just sitting there kind of with crickets. But knowing the potential, because of my business strategy background, I knew the potential because I knew, for the love, right, we have this juice that you can only get here, right? Which is amazing stuff. You have the oils that we have. You have all of these things that people are thirsty for right now, right? Because they want to be healthy. They want to be happy. We have all of these products, but I, I needed to find a way that was going to be duplicatable. I needed to find a way to build my business that was, that not only was about me, but was going to, like, the people under me, they were going to be able to also do the same thing and put their own flavor in it. And then they're going to build out the same way. So I, I created a system for my team, and that's how we hit gold in six months. And everybody can do it, like, every color personality that is doing it, they're all. I haven't had somebody come to me and say, oh, this just isn't working for me. It works for everybody. It works for every stinking person. So, so anyway, that is, that's my story. I had to, it was necessity was the mother of invention for me. I had to make something in order to survive, in order to actually create this business. I was looking at the landscape of, of Young Living, things that were available, and I was seeing images, and I was seeing IPAs, and I was seeing graphics, and I was seeing classes and all of that stuff. And I'm like, that's nice, and that's great. It's necessary, right? But for me, I needed like, do this, do this, do this, do this, do this, have it built out like this, and then I could hit the ground running. So that's just what I created for myself, for my team, and the rest is kind of history. So there's that.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing that. And if, if you could, I don't know, if you could like maybe condense, like, you know, there, you know, the kind of main things that, you know, if somebody wanted to replicate what you're doing. And by the way, if you want to learn how to actually do that, we are going to be sharing an opportunity for you to learn more about that. But just to kind of give them an idea of, give everyone an idea of sort of what this encompasses for you, right? Because you have, okay, so you've got a system, but you've reached this point in a fairly unconventional way compared to what a lot of leaders teach in this business, right? So what are sort of the differentiating factors for your approach?
Yeah, well, I never have signed anybody up via classes. And I would not, I'm not saying that, you know, don't do it. Some people are very, very good at it. I'm saying it's not necessary. You don't have to do it if you're not comfortable doing it. If you don't have the time to do it, if it does not fit in your life, that does not mean you cannot have a Young Living business, is what I'm saying. I have done it in my spare five minutes here and my spare five minutes there. So the way that I do it is via, it's social media for the most part. However, then I can take it offline if somebody is local to me. And if they're not local to me, then we talk like this. We'll talk on a Zoom call or something like that. I still like to get in front of people whenever it's time to really have the conversation, the, the conversation, right? The, the marry me conversation. So, so I talk a lot about having conversations online. I give a lot of direction about how to have those conversations. I give conversation cheat sheets, which are loose templated ideas of how a conversation can go. And then after you've built rapport, but report, rapport, I just said it how you spell it. I don't even know how that happened. What a nerd. So, um, once you have that rapport built, which is going to happen through the conversation that you have that loose template for, so you've got the, for my greens in the room right now, you've got the thing you can read through and be like, okay, that, that, that. After you have that built, then you can convert the conversation, and that's actually what it's called, convert the conversation to, whether it's a business opportunity, or, or if it's a product that, that you have, have uncovered via that conversation. So what this is all, in a nutshell, you guys, what this all is, is consultative sales. But I've broken it down to you in a Young Living way. So it's not, you don't have to like go learn about consultative selling and all the things, and then figure out what that means in Young Living. This is, it's, it's all broken down for you. Literally, you don't have to think about anything other than putting your own flavor into things, because obviously, you don't want to copy and paste something I said, because maybe I don't sound like you, right? But you would just want to say it in the way that you say it, but the idea is there. So it's happened, all of my success has happened online and continues to happen online. And the reason that that was important to me is because I want for everybody coming into this business to know that they can do it wherever they sit. So we, at that point, we're homeschooling our daughter. Right now, she goes to Montessori, and then we're going to pick up homeschooling when she turns six. But we were homeschooling our daughter, so we needed to have time to do that during the day. I couldn't take hours out of the day to just be doing this thing or planning an event for people coming to my house at, you know, X time and whatever. I needed to have real-life conversations with people every single day, and then be able to flip them into members if it made sense for them. And that's, that's what all of this does. Did that answer your question?
Yes. Yes, definitely, definitely. And I mean, you guys, quick, quick show of hands. I mean, who, who would love to learn how to do that, right? To be able to, in your five minutes here, spare time there, to be getting into these engaged conversations with people who are already here to learn from you, who already want to know more about what you have to say. All right, yes, plenty. So, um, here's what we've got coming up, you guys. Next Thursday, right? So today is the 7th. Next Thursday, the 14th, we are going to have a live webinar training where we're going to show you how to be like Martha. And so what we're going to do is Martha is going to be breaking down exactly what these steps are that she has taken her team through, and what she has taken many others through. You've got hundreds of, no, it's not just hundreds. You've got thousands of distributors that follow you and their teachings and what you've done. And these folks are duplicating what you're doing. So you're going to learn what those things are, and then we're going to take that a step further. You're going to learn how to be like Martha, right? Because she's got systems in place that support her business so that as we are, as you said, did you say, like, you're barreling toward platinum right now? Guys, when you get to a point where you start having these conversations, like we were saying about this contact manager, if you don't have systems in place, you will reach a point where you're burnt out, and you can't talk to anybody else, right?
Amen. Amen. You have to have automation and systems in place. Have to, have to, have to.
So we're going to show you how you can not only implement this, but set yourself up like you already have a platinum business from the get-go and off to the races. Who wants to learn more about this? How exciting would that be? All right, so here's where you go. Right now, you can go to getoiling.com/goldin6. Gold, the number, the letter I N, and the number six? I think the letter six will take you, the spelling of six will take you to there, too, right, Greg?
Yeah, I set it up both ways. I put the link in the chat as well.
Fantastic. GetOiling.com/goldin6. Click the link. If you're here with us live, you'll get a link below the video as well if you're watching this as a recording. Anybody have any questions? You know, go ahead and send us what you've got. We can tell you a little bit more, and then obviously tell you that, you know, that you're going to learn a lot more about it on Thursday, the 14th. All right, Shell says, do you, did you say there's going to be a way for us to have access to this system? Yes, you're going to learn about that on the webinar next week, getoiling.com/goldin6. Let's see. Michelle says, or freeze up and don't because you don't have a system. Yes. Awesome, awesome. Yeah, so if you guys have any, any questions, what are you excited to learn? Let us know, and we will see you on that webinar again. That is getoiling.com/goldin6. Martha, if you could tell our, our attendees here today, if there's one thing that they could do differently today to improve their results in their conversations with people, what would you say that would be?
Oh, don't give away the whole, don't give away the cow in your conversations. When people are asking you, you know, like, if they're asking you about a product or something like that, don't go straight into, here's the product, here's what it does, yada, yada, yada. Don't go straight into that, okay? Because here's what people do is they become professional researchers, and they are going to go to Google, they are going to go to Amazon, they are going to find all of the things out, and they may sign up with you, maybe, but it's not going to be a sure thing. They may also just go straight to Amazon because they feel it's, it's frictionless, right? From the Jordan Schrant, it would be frictionless for them to just go to Amazon instead of having to sign up for this membership and all of the things. What you want is you want a consultation. You want a conversation with them about that product. So, and if it's even good for them, and you can't have that conversation if you just answer their questions. I guess that's the thing. Don't answer their question right away, because you're, you need to ask them some questions first. That's the whole consultative thing, right? Like, okay, cool. What were you wanting to use this for? Let's make sure this is the right thing for you. And then that's, and then you keep, you keep moving forward. But it's not all about, don't get so thirsty, don't get so hungry for it that you're just like, oh, there's a sale in front of me. I'm going to go ahead and get this, because you may very well lose it just in that same thirst. You need to slow it down. You need to make them feel heard. You need to give them value. And then you need to let them know why they need to be signing up with you after.
Awesome. Kayla had a question. Do you attract people online using coding and other search engine optimization strategies? Or was your reach online organic? Great question, Kayla.
That's a great question. My reach is organic. I don't use any tricks or anything like that. It's all organic, and it's all via relationships. Now, there is a system to how you have the conversations with people and how you find new relevant people to talk to. There is a system absolutely with that. But I would say that a lot of my signups didn't even come from my website. One, one I know did, which was amazing and awesome, and I almost feel like it was divine, I'm just going to say. But, but most of it was from social media, so it wasn't even from, so it couldn't be, you know, a search engine hack or anything like that. It was all straight, just conversations and building relationships with people. So yeah, that's a great question.
You did kind of find a way to sort of, you know, hack the Facebook algorithm, right? That's part of what you teach, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, that is. Yes. Okay, so yes, on that. Because whenever you have conversations with people in Messenger, just a heads up. Here's just, here's a little gold nugget, all right? Whenever you're having messages with people on Facebook Messenger, that is the heaviest weight in the algorithm that you could possibly hit. And what that actually means is that when, when you are talking to them and they are talking to you, then you both start to see each other's stuff a whole lot. So what you're posting is very, very important, but we get into that also.
Awesome. So you, you don't just say, okay, here's, you know, hustle here, and, you know, maybe say this sometimes here. You are really going to be giving the nuts and bolts, like, you literally do this and then do this.
Yeah.
Type this and then type this, right?
Yes. So I have a hashtag called GetTheFluffOut. And that's because I can't stand filler and fluff. I don't like these ambiguous words of, of hustle here and stuff like that. Like, I want to, but what does that mean? But what does that actually mean? And so, yeah, that's, that's the stuff that I talk about.
Awesome, awesome. Erica has a question. I stopped posting on my main Facebook page and created a group with about 60 people. Good job. This way, I know everyone in that group is interested. What kind of content would you suggest to drive people to get a PSK?
That's a good question. So driving people to get a PSK, that mindset on that, first of all, sounds, it, you, you, you really want to drive people to get signed up. So if it's a PSK, that's awesome. If it's the basic kit, that's awesome. That's just the first sale and it's just them getting in the door. So really, what you're doing is you're sharing stories about how you use the product. You have other people sharing stories about how they're using the product. You're sharing testimonials. You're sharing outside references that, that talk about how good this product is or how good this type of product is. If it's a probiotic or something like that, if we're talking Life9, then you see like an outside source, like an outside trusted news source that is talking about the value of probiotics. Well, then you would be able to bring that in, share that and say, and ours is the best on the planet. So like, that's, that's like the kind of, you're just, you're talking about what they're there for. And you're sharing the value of, of what we have. So it's, there's no one way to do it. Like I said, it's seven to 15 touches is what it's going to take for people to, to finally do the thing. And sometimes it's many more touches and sometimes it's many less, right? But that's your average. And so it's just, it's being consistent and breeding trust with your consistency. And then it's continuing to talk about all of that stuff. And it's a journey. And there's not, there's, there might be one sweet, one sweet spot post that you put out there that a lot of people sign up from, but don't hang your hat on that. It always is going to be a journey. So.
Right. And would you agree, the, the thing that you're actually trying to drive people toward is conversations with you, right? Because that's where the conversion happens, right?
100% yes.
Awesome, awesome. Diane has a question before we get rolling. Do you mainly post in a personal Facebook page or a business Facebook page?
That's a great question too. It depends on if you plan on following it up with Facebook ads. So that's, that really is, it's, I don't know. I do personal Facebook page, even though I know how to do ads and I can do them, I choose not to. So the personal Facebook page is where you're going to get the best leverage, the best traction. A business Facebook page, I mean, we have to look at it from Facebook standpoint. As a business, they want to make money off of ads from businesses. So they're automatically not going to put you in front of people for free on a business Facebook page. Okay. So if you already have a lot of traction on it, more power to you, you might be able to do well with it. It's more likely that you're going to find your success on your personal Facebook page, though.
Truth, truth. Business pages are pay-to-play for sure. Awesome. So I, I think that there's a, there's a one kind of final point I want to make before we head out of here. And guys, by the way, if you're not doing this yet, go over to getoiling.com/goldin6 and get registered for this webinar. I think there's a really important thing to note here. And I didn't know before, you just said it a minute ago, about your history specifically working with GoDaddy. I knew that you had a digital marketing background. And I, you know, I do as well. But one of the things that I know I personally learned and that I try to teach people, you know, we're doing these sessions, is that the, the digital marketing approach is not really applicable in, in its, you know, sort of existing sense. And more importantly, it's not duplicable, right? So there's a lot that you could be doing and that you know how to do, you know, guru level, you know, interesting tech tricks and stuff like that. But what you're teaching and what folks are going to learn, you don't have to have any kind of tech background or marketing background, sales background, business background, whatever, to pull this off, right?
I have grandparents doing this that just started doing it and are already seeing success with it. And what I mean by that is not that there's, you know, nothing, I love grandparents, but they've got a different level of tech understanding than most people, period. So that's, that, I'm saying, yes, absolutely, anybody is able to do this. And no, I don't use all of my tech expertise on it because it's not, it needs to be duplicatable. It needs to be. And quite frankly, that, like what you said, that is not duplicatable. It's not even successful in the first place. So it doesn't even matter if it's duplicatable. Like, it's not even successful in the first place. You can't, the same way that Nike gets their leads and their sales and stuff like that, you cannot duplicate that for Young Living because it needs to be in a relationship. It needs to be, you need to build personal trust with a person. And that doesn't happen just with, you know, like the, the Facebook ads and stuff like that.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely, absolutely. So fantastic. You guys, again, head over to getoiling.com/goldin6. Get yourself registered. You're going to learn the non-techy way to do exactly step-by-step what you need to do to get to gold and beyond. So excited to do this. Greg or Amanda, you got anything else you guys want to add before we head on our merry way?
Thanks for being on here, Martha, and everyone who's joined us. Yeah. And all the awesome questions. This has been a great session. We're very excited about this.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Fantastic. Well, you guys, we will see you next Thursday on our weekly work session. And then more importantly, next Thursday night, it was 8:30 PM Eastern Time. Register now, getoiling.com/goldin6 and you will be able to attend live and then of course, get the recording. So we will see you guys on Thursday. Have a great day.
Thank you. Bye.